Go, 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 honey.
If you love them enough to drive an hour to cheer them on as they get beat eleven to nothing in the rain, then surely you'll check nhtsa.gov/the right seat to make sure they're correctly buckled in the backseat.
Throw that ball, Diane. You got this.
Let's go.
Uh, seat belts?
Ah, don't worry about it.
All right. Those dudes are going nowhere fast.
Donald Driver.
Buckle up, fellas. If you don't, it can cost you money or worse.
I told you.
You were right.
Click it or kick it. Together, we can save lives.
My kids put skis on as they were learning to walk.
Yeah, just shuffle your feet.
I would just take Joan and put her inside my jacket and we would just sit there and drink hot cocoa. I want my kids to have those moments with their kids.
Keep going, keep going. All right, now put your feet down.
From the second you have a child, you want to do everything you can to protect them. I think our action on climate change is no different. It's just an extension of being a mom. Being a scientist, I'm worried about climate change.
You can ask in the meeting. I've done that. Oh, gotcha.
All right, Dan, ready, Dan? All right. Folks, we're ready. Let's, uh, it's five o'clock. Let me call the Village Board of Oregon meeting to order for Monday, January 23rd, 2023. Candy, roll call, please. I'm sorry. Yeah, I did that. Yep. It's been a while.
You did. I don't want to.
I did. It's been a while.
Beshid?
Here.
Bealoh?
Here.
Glish?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Van Kampen?
Here.
Here.
Okay. All right, we'll do the approval for January 9th, 2023 Village Board Meeting Minutes. If I can get a motion in a second, let's get Amanda and Derek hands. Any discussion on the minutes from anybody? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Public appearances, comments, communications, 4A is Class A beer and Class A liquor. Alcohol beverage retail license application for Hy-Vee. Located at 787 North Main Street, Suite 1. And first item will be the public hearing, so I'll open, I'll open the public hearing this time. I don't know if we have any, I think we don't have any staff comments. Things were in the packet for everybody. So if the Hy-Vee folks want to come up and say a couple, whatever you want to say to the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jim Carney. I'm one of the regional managers for Hy-Vee and not a whole lot to say. This is my first type of board meeting of this, of this type. And we're very excited to be part of the Village of Oregon, looking forward to getting things started when we can take over the store. And we plan to open on Tuesday, February 7th. And just very, very beautiful community and we're very excited to be here, so.
Okay, Jim, that's it? Okay. So Jim, I may call you up. We'll see if there's public comments or there's comments from the Village Board. So, so next we'll go to public comments. If anybody in the public has got comments on this item, you may come up and speak. So this is, this is the public hearing for Hy-Vee?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah. Not, not quite yet.
Not yet.
Not quite yet. So this is the public hearing for Hy-Vee. Anybody from the public wants to come and speak on this item? Okay. All right, I'm not seeing any. So Jim, why don't you come back up? This will be now the Village Board. If Village Board members have comments, I saw Derek's hand there. Derek?
Yeah, this is more of a comment for Candy than anything. I'm going to abstain from this vote because both of my kids work at Bills and now subsequently Hy-Vee, so I'm not going to be participating in this bit.
Okay. All right, yeah, Amanda?
Yeah. Welcome. I'm thrilled that you guys are coming in here. This is a good thing for the community, keeping a grocery store in there, so I'm happy to see you and thanks for doing this. My comment, I guess, is I'm wondering if you, I'm looking at this, your site map here, what, what's it called? Your?
Premise description.
Premise description, yeah. And the areas that are in red are areas where you plan to display alcohol? Am I seeing that correctly?
Yes, that is where currently Bills has alcohol displayed. And to be honest, that would be the extent of where I would see us doing the same thing. Not, you know, understanding that there's, you know, concerns or if there's rules or regulations, we just want to make sure that we're following any rules or regulations. And when we, not knowing what rules there were when Bills was operating, we just drew this up because that's what they currently have. And, you know, yes, there might be a few changes. There might not quite be as many. There might be some seasonal things that change out. For example, the area right across from the existing liquor department that has the four small boxes, correct, right there? Those might not always be an alcoholic beverage. It might be a seasonal candy. It might be, might be a bakery display. So there's definitely some things that can change. Obviously, you know, we want to make sure that we're just operating within the parameters that are granted to us.
Sure. And I appreciate that. And, and part of the reason I'm asking is because I've had over, over, you know, at least the five years that I've been trustee, people have approached me about having, that the fact that Bills had a lot of alcohol and kind of around the store. And I, I've gotten some requests, like, you know, how to, like, it's, it's a bit much. And I'm wondering if you would be willing to consider reducing the, some of the other areas around the store, more, more concentrating it in like the area, like where the beer cave is and the wine and all that. And the other ones, like right when you come in the door, like reducing some of that or eliminating some, I don't know. Just, I'm trying to figure out ways that maybe we could work together because it, it's, it's been a lot for, it, I get comments about it.
Sure.
And so as a community that doesn't want to necessarily promote the culture of drinking to the extent that it sometimes is in Wisconsin, right? We're trying to back off on that a little bit. I understand you want to sell alcohol. That's part of your business. You know, no objections to that whatsoever, but just kind of keeping it in one area of the store so that people who want to avoid it can. Does that make sense?
It does. Will I, will I say that all of those areas will always have alcoholic beverages there? The answer's no. We're in the process of revamping the store. There's going to be a nice, you know, like seasonal candy is going to be moving. We're hoping to expand our footprint in food service in the first aisle. We're hoping to expand our offerings for delicatessen, international cheeses, pre-made salads, pre-made sandwiches, soups, a lot more food service focus. And so that will be, you know, our main area of, of focus in that first aisle. So will we have the, I mean, for lack of a better term, the big wine train down the first aisle? I don't see that being the case. Will we, could we have some possible side stacks that might tie in with international cheese that pairs well with a certain wine? You know, obviously, we'd want to look to do that. A type of wine or maybe a beer that ties in with a charcuterie item that we hope to carry. I understand the, the fact that you don't want it to be overtaking the store, but we, we hope to do everything in good taste and, and make it a nice touch point. Obviously, the area of the, of the wine and spirits area in the large rectangle up towards the top, yes, that is the main focus. There will be some large displays there because that's where that, that's where the space is, especially for like the beer companies.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I get why you have the end caps near it to trigger people that, oh yeah, this is the liquor section. You know, I, I understand. I don't really object to any of that. I'm, you know, like I'm looking at the, the one back by the, between the produce and the meat area, that one, like.
That is actually going to be changing over to a 12-foot section with eight feet of meat department spices, seasonings and rubs, and a four-foot section of seafood seasonings. So that will, that will be going away and that's going to be more towards tying in with meat department items, seasoning, rubs, marinades. Hoping to also bring in a nice selection of local, like Wisconsin-made beef products, local summer sausages, things of that nature that tie in well with that area.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I mean, I understand why you want to do it. I guess I just am trying to figure out ways still, you know, I get that it won't be all the time. You know, I, here's, here's my, my concern too, is it's a lot easier for, for someone to come back to us to get an area expanded than it is to reduce it. You know, so I'm, I would rather start from a position of having fewer square feet devoted to alcohol than having a large amount and have it, try to get it reduced later. Do you know what I mean?
Can I ask you a question, Amanda?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you trying, are you asking him for a commitment to reduce the square footage of, of, that's, that's committed to alcohol?
Yes, that's, in a nutshell, that's my ask. I, oh, yeah. If you're.
That's not clear, so can you just say?
Sorry.
You asked for that commitment?
Yes, yes, that's, well, so that's, that's my ask is there, if, if there's any areas there that you would be willing to, to commit to not putting alcohol.
So you're specifically asking for additional areas other than the 12-foot area leading to the restrooms that I just pointed out that for sure won't have any alcohol? You're asking for additional areas to be scaled down?
Yeah, if possible, that would be great. I mean, or, or if, if not reduction in square footage, putting it all in one area of the store or, you know, you could expand the area where you have it, but just so it's not like all throughout the store. That is, I mean, I know like in your Fitchburg store, it's in a separate liquor area that has a separate door. I'm not asking for a separate door or anything, but at least it's all in one part of the store as opposed to spread throughout.
That is true. I do happen to oversee that store. And for instance, I know that they have a nice touch point of La marca Prosecco back by the bakery department. A case stack, maybe four or five cases, not a huge 50-case display of Kendall Jackson Chardonnay. So when I, when I say the word touch point, that's more or less the thing I'm talking about is maybe a, could it be a four-case stack of wine by the international cheese or by the charcuterie? Not the huge, and I say wine train because that's just a term that grocers use, but not the, oh my goodness, wine train when you first walk in the store. I don't see that being an area of focus for us. But there might be some touch points if that's allowed.
I mean, if it's, if it's in the map, it's allowed. That's kind of how it works, so I, that's why I'm trying to reduce the area.
So to answer your question, would the area be reduced in that first aisle? Yes, because it would be more touch points, like a case stack here, maybe a case stack 12 feet down the way where international cheese is or charcuterie or bakery. It's not going to be the 50-case, 100-case. In some cases, there was probably 200 to 300 cases of wine in the area that you're talking about. And, you know, we're all about a return on investment. And so if we have 300 cases of wine in the first aisle, we understand that that is, you know, money that is tied up in inventory as opposed to, you know, turning that. So we're all about quick turns. And, you know, to be honest, we want to make sure that we understand what the, the habits, the purchasing habits are in Oregon. So, and, you know, so it, it's definitely going to be a learning thing for myself and for the, the, the management team. I do know that one of the people that was primarily responsible for the purchasing of the beverages and, and the displays won't be working going forward and choosing to, you know, take a step back, you know, choose retirement, different career, whatever it is. So, I mean, that's, you know, it's different, I guess, decision makers that will be a part of it as well.
All right, well, I mean, it seems reasonable to me that you're going to voluntarily sort of reduce it, but I, I don't know. I'm curious what other board members think. I'm going to open it up and see if anybody else wants to weigh in here because if I'm the only one, then I'll shut up.
So, so Jim, let me ask you, so if you, you're open to reducing some certain places, what, what amount? What, how many, can you give us an estimate?
Maybe that would help.
He already said that section by the meat.
There's a, there's a, that's roughly about a 15-foot section right there where the cursor is. That's going to be gone.
Okay.
Because that's going to all spices, rubs, marinades for meat and seafood items.
Yeah.
The long rectangle in the first aisle, I just don't see that being a good use of, sorry.
That's okay. We're good.
Okay. A good use of space. That's where I'd like to mostly have it more towards single case stack touch points. You know, we, we're having a citrus display contest right now of produce in the first aisle. And so Blue Moon happens to be a beer that ties in well with oranges. So would there be some, maybe a display of Blue Moon beer in January during citrus displays? We would look to do that, but we don't want it to overpower. It's still the citrus sale.
Okay. All right, yeah, Jenna?
So this is more of a question for you. Yeah, sorry. So thinking about this map, are we, are, they only allow them to have alcohol in those spaces or?
Those red spaces.
Right, okay.
Yep.
So would it be helpful then if since that one section, you know, you're not going to be having alcohol if that is removed from the map and then that's?
Randy, can I make a suggestion?
I can see where you wouldn't necessarily want to remove the space for the wine train because then you would have flexibility to move around the touch point as you needed it, but at least that one section that you know is, you're not going to be using alcohol with that.
You know, I don't see that being a good use of space to, or you, good use of dollars for turning inventory. I mean, I, I know I could sell, I could sell thousands of dollars of candy, you know, in that section because that, with that being our area, I wish I had a blueprint on me, a finished blueprint of what it's going to be. Because our seasonal aisle is going to be really close to that. So there are going to be some really, I mean, there's going to be pods of Snicker, Fun Size and Twix and Milky Way and things of that nature too. And, you know, Halloween, we could have all the Halloween hard goods, spring and summer, you know, things of, things of that nature. So, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to, you know, go all the way around Dane County to get across the street, but, you know, and I want to be respectful because it, you know, and we want to be good partners. I mean, I'm a, I'm a phone call away. You can say, hey buddy, you need to be at the next meeting. And I'll be here. So, I mean, I'm, I am the most transparent person on earth. We're just really excited to be here, understand the concern.
Candy's, Candy's got a comment.
Well, what I was going to suggest, if the board is open to it, after hearing the comments here, I would be more, if you wanted to make a motion to authorize me to work with the, with Hy-Vee on a final premise description, I would be happy to do that as well.
I would be okay with that.
Okay.
Certainly.
All right.
Do we, you need a motion for that?
You can make that part of your, part of your.
We get to it. We're almost there.
Okay.
Yeah. Any, anybody else on the board comments for Hy-Vee? Okay. Hearing now, then I'm going to close, close the hearing and then we can have discussion, possible motion now, Amanda. If you, if you desire, if there's, if there's no other discussion.
I would like to make the motion that, to approve the liquor license with the condition that the Hy-Vee representative, I'm sorry.
I'm Jim, Jim Carney.
Thank you. Okay. And, and the clerk work together to, on the, the premise map.
Yep. And then if you can also include the motion to approve presentant contingent upon satisfactory inspection reports from the PD.
Yes, thank you.
And the fire and building inspector.
What she said.
Okay.
Do I have to repeat it? I just, she said it. We got it.
We got it, Amanda.
That's the motion.
All right, somebody want to second that? Okay, I'll, Jenna's hand first, so, all right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jim?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister, is it Bealoh?
Yes.
I've had the privilege to talk to your two youngsters. Great kids.
Thank you for your flex, for your flexibility.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, now we're, we're, we're on 4B, which is public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to write information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. I have one yellow sheet. I know there's some people here for the, the garden, so I'm going to ask Kurt to come up because there's just one of you. You have three minutes, Kurt?
Thank you so much. Kurt Kaller, architect with Pocket Research Architects, representing Pine Cove Apartments, here speaking in favor of the new QuickTrip project. I had the opportunity to appear at your, your planning commission group and there were three issues that we kind of brought forward that were friendly amendments and two of them were very readily resolved that evening. They were clarification on some of the landscaping and certainty that there was not going to be a car wash on this property with the property across the street. That was kind of left a little open at times. But one item remained and that's why I'm here in front of you this evening. And that's to talk about, to make a friendly amendment and asking this board to consider that you place a requirement on the development of the property for a fence at the back, the northish side of the property. Really for four main reasons. Number one, light spillage. Cars, trucks, there are parking lots that face directly into residential areas. The QuickTrip people have very nice examples of fences and in, in other, then Mount Hore comes to mind. It works great up against a residential area. Number two, it is the back of the building. It's a new building. They do a nice product, but it is the service side of a building that will be visible to, towards the residential area. Thirdly, a little bit of sound control. It's not sound masking. Sound goes around, goes over, I know, but you know, if you put a, a good fence up, it does aid with sound control. And lastly, it comes down to a little bit of a matter of safety and that right now it's an open walkway between adjacent properties from residential to the backside of the, of the QuickTrip. The addition of a fence along that side of the property would serve to direct people to the, the nice sidewalk system that's proposed from the residential area to the QuickTrip area. So for those reasons, I ask the board to consider this as a friendly amendment in strong support of the project and for your consideration. Glad to take any questions.
So you're suggesting an opaque fence then, not like, not a chain link fence, like an opaque fence? Is that correct?
Yes, and thank you for that clarification. Yes, an opaque fence, in my mind, I see their Mount Hore project, which has an opaque fence on it. It's about eight feet tall in that particular situation.
That was my next question, how tall? So great, thank you.
All right. Yep, Mike?
So you term this a friendly amendment? Does that mean that QuickTrip agrees with it or?
No, in terms of an adjacent property owner suggesting in support of a project, that no, it has not been discussed with the QuickTrip people, but speaking in favor of the project, I see that as a friendly approach to it.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll have more discussion when, when we get to that item for the board and we'll see what happens.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else for, for public comment? Three minutes. Come on up.
Sorry?
Can you repeat that?
Sorry, I didn't get that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sarah Dewey, 266 North Main Street.
Thank you.
Just go and pull the microphone over to you there.
There it is. How's that, better?
Thank you.
So I just want to, you've heard me before, over and over. I just want to reiterate support for the Sculpture Garden Park. And although I'd of course like to see the whole lot committed to the park, I don't see that happening. I see that at this point, if we get anything, it'll be kind of a happy day. It's the feeling I get, but that's just me. So as a compromise, in my mind, I propose the 1.4 acres for each, both the park and some sort of development and ask that that be included in the RFP so that, my feeling is that if, if something isn't specified, nobody, whether it's a developer or park, how can anybody make a proposal without knowing how much space they have? Because if you set a proposal and it's way more than what anybody's willing, then is there going to be time to go back to the drawing board? Is a developer really going to put effort in to coming up with a design time, energy costs in a design and then have it come back that, no, you aren't going to have that much? You need to scale it way down. They basically could go back to the drawing board. So I think some sort of indication as to the amount of land dedicated to each would be nice in the RFP, so. I guess that's it. Thanks for your time.
All right, Sarah, thank you. Now it's your time. Yeah, you're ready. We're ready for you. We're ready.
My name is Sally Marshall Hendrick. I'm at 124 Rosewood Avenue in the Village of Oregon. And I am a proud member of the Friends of Oregon Sculpture Garden Organization and I'm going to just read through this so I don't miss any points, all right? I'm not the professional speaker that so many of them here are. Our group is now incorporated with a nonprofit, I'm going to start over with more enthusiasm, okay? Our group is now incorporated with a nonprofit 501(c)(3) status. Yay! I know it took a lot of work and they did it. It's phenomenal. As a nonprofit, we are finding it easier to raise funds. Fundraising is a priority for our group and we are taking pledges and writing grant proposals to develop this park. As you know, community surveys about 249 North Main Street came back with the majority of respondents in favor of preserving the green space and mature trees. The other respondents were interested in multi-use for the property. Given this response, we are hopeful that the Village Board will listen to the community and set aside half of the 2.8 acre property for the Central Park, Public Park, and the other half for development such as affordable housing or townhouses. We are respectfully asking the board to write into the request for proposal process that the 1.4 acres at the top of the hill facing the Main Street is designated for a community park that remains village land. This area has the mature trees, including the 250-year-old bur oak that people want to save. The other 1.4 acres going north-south from Johnson Street could be designated for development. This development area would be on the flatter land off the Johnson Street, making it good entrance for housing since Johnson has little traffic compared to Main Street. Our professional site plan shows the incredible potential of the land at the top of the hill. It could be a destination park that brings visitors into Oregon. With a walking entrance off Main Street, people could easily walk from the park downtown and vice versa. This would be great for businesses downtown such as restaurants, cafes and shops. With the park having a central green plaza off the Main Street, the village could bring in revenue from art fairs, food fairs and other events where the village could change, could charge booth and food cart fees. The beautiful gardens and pavilion would provide an opportunity for the village to bring in more revenue. The proposed pavilion, which our friends group would build, could be used as rental space for educational events as well as celebrations such as family gatherings, parties and even weddings. In closing.
Sal, Sal, okay. You're good.
In the Village Board, if the Village Board sets aside the 1.4 acres for. In the village board, if the village board sets aside the 1.4 acres for the park, the Friends of Oregon Sculpture Garden group will commit, will commit to raising the funds to build the park. This includes its components like the children's play area, the pavilion, gardens, and more. This park will put Oregon on the map, and it'll be a win-win for our village, this is what we feel. So let's not squander this opportunity.
Okay, Sally, thank you.
Any questions?
All right, next, come on up. Tell us your name and your address, please.
I'm Jill Ellis, I live at 280 Eagle Drive in Oregon. I believe that the mature trees and green space that the site proposed for the Sculpture Garden are treasures that would be terrible to lose. I urge you to remove that half of the site that is at the top of the hill from the scope of the RFP, if not the entire site, at least that portion. I recognize the financial concerns of people who wish to sell the land so as to reduce the village's debt obligations. I'm a retired person myself, living on a middle-class fixed income. However, I feel that the benefits of maintaining old growth trees and green space for public use in the heart of the village are well worth the investment. The benefits include the fact that large, mature trees add real tangible value to communities. Their leaves filter out carbon dioxide, bacteria, fungus, dust, and other harmful substances. When a mature tree is chopped down, the nursery and garden industry of Australia estimates that approximately 2,000 new trees must be planted to fully compensate for the loss of a single, large, mature tree. Stormwater runoff control is another valuable asset provided by mature trees, an asset that Oregon certainly needs. According to the USDA Forest Service, a typical medium-sized tree can intercept as much as 2,380 gallons of rainfall per year. Cutting down large trees on the Main Street property could wind up costing the village dearly in terms of future flood damage. Climate change threatens devastation to our world if people fail to take action to preserve the environment, and sometimes it feels like there's very little that we as individuals can do about that. But keeping these mature trees is an important step that we can take, here and now. It's easy to tell Brazilians that they should preserve the rainforest, but it's equally important for communities across the world to invest in their own part of the environment. Beyond the trees' benefits to the environment, I believe the concepts proposed for the Sculpture Park would bring tremendous benefits as a beautiful place for Oregon residents to gather, relax, play, and socialize. Having this location available right in the heart of the community is an incredible, one-in-a-generation opportunity. The Sculpture Park could become one of the best things that Oregon is known for. I'm all for developing lower and middle, middle-income housing, just not in this location. Oregon's founders had the foresight to preserve many parks, making it a beautiful place to live. This is our chance to continue that legacy for future generations. In summary, we have one chance to save the mature trees and green space we're so lucky to have in downtown Oregon. Building a new development there would provide short-term financial gain, but in my view, would be short-sighted in terms of the long-term environmental health and beauty benefits that would be lost. Please make sure we preserve at least half of the site by removing it from the scope of the RFP. Thank you very much.
Thank you Jill, thank you. All right, anybody else under public comment tonight? Okay? All right, we'll move on. To approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,970,493.03. Can I get a motion in a second, we'll get her on, Carlene and Derek? Questions? I had, I had one, and I don't know who it's, the, the, what is a plotter? It was $53.90.
Plotter?
Plotter.
Probably plotter.
Plotter, I'm sorry.
Candy, you want to take that one?
We're gonna play bingo.
Plotter. Plotter.
Yeah, I can take it, it's actually the purchase of a new plotter for our new building.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a large format, it can print out to 36-inch wide color. We use it in all departments.
Okay.
It's also, it's also gonna have scanning capabilities, so we can start scanning in some of our big plans.
All right.
I have a question about that.
All right, go ahead Amanda.
Why is, why does it appear as three charges on here? That was what was confusing to me, too.
Because we're using some borrowed funds that we have to use up for in 2020.
Ah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, Mike?
Uh, number 8,000, there's a boiler replacement for $47,000 and change. I know that's not for the village hall, so what's that for?
Police department.
We've not bought a boiler.
I think that's ours.
That's probably the police department boiler.
Yeah, so you'll see, we tried repairing the old boiler, which is built at 934, just above it. That didn't work, so then we had to replace it. Right, we did that with, I don't really know what it was, yeah, borrowed funds.
The old boiler didn't last long. Just saying.
Yeah.
All right, Amanda?
I have two other ones that just jumped out at me.
Yep.
Number 101,63. It's a Boldtronics, is that, Exact Vision camera licenses?
It's the license for the library security camera system, so.
Excellent, okay, thank you, that makes more sense. And then, item 103,15. The Find-A-Way World LLC Playaways?
Also, I know the library collection, that it's basically, instead of having a book on a CD or an DVD, it's a little, it's a state, and so we give a lot of those for kids. We do one that works, I think one over the previous year, you plug headphones into it, so you can't lose CDs or records. You can also plug it into your car, so people that still have, um, T-Box and things, CDs players in their car, can still use that.
Thank you, I, I've used those, they're fun.
All right, Phil's got one, or two, three, four.
Maybe. 8905, page 44 of the packet. Building permit, sewer connection, water impact, is that?
That's all.
Library, yeah, sorry Jen.
That is the building permit fees for the new library, so there are certain permit fees that are at 50 percent, that's the first line, um, there are fees that the village per, their code is able to charge, it's only 50 percent. There are some costs that they have to state for those fees, as I understand it. The other, we, Jeff and Mark, you can talk about more, but I, my understanding, they were unable to waive those, we didn't have a conversation about those, the sewer connection and the water impact fees. I don't know if Jeff and Mark wants to add to that, but we did.
Yeah, that's the library purchasing, well, or to the utilities. So we, we do have impact fees and connection fees for the sewer. The water, obviously, water impact fee is any type, for, you know, improvements, and then sewer connection fee is obviously the cost of what we think, and it's based off the size of the water meter that's installed, and it's a schedule in our fee schedule that we have every year.
Uh, one more, 10772, just from my education, probably. Page 46 of the packet.
Every year, $76,000, $75,000?
Yeah, so.
Yes, so that's, I'm glad you asked that, because that's our commitment in the, uh, with Yohara Winds, which is the adaptive management program that we pay to be part of, to help reduce phosphorus in the Yohara River water chain. And we are partnered, partners with them and 20 other communities that is, DNR is allowing us to do that through adaptive management, which means we're putting our money towards improvements in the watershed, rather than trying to make very costly improvements to our wastewater treatment plant.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah.
That is it.
All right, that's it for Phil, anybody else? Okay, we got a motion in a second, Candy will take a voice vote on this, please.
Van Kampen.
Uh, yes.
Glisch.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Beal.
Yes.
Wunsch.
Yes.
Fashion.
Yes.
And Peterson.
Yes.
Okay. All right, number six is our consent agenda, A through F. If we get a motion in a second, we can deal with that. Anybody, Jenna and Amanda, okay, any, anybody have a question? Mike's got a question, which one, Mike?
Yeah, under, um, section 6F for Computer Magic on page 82, it excludes, um, the Computer Magic's responsibility for security and local backup of our data, and then later on, under appendix A on page 90, it includes it back. Does that mean that they cover and are responsible for our security and local backups?
Yes, they are.
Or not?
What page was that?
Uh, one's on 82 and one's on 90. In the packet, I have no idea what it is in the actual agreement. Suppose I could look for you.
Pages aren't numbered.
Maybe just got missed in one place?
The other question I have, I mean, as long as they're covered, that, those areas are covered, I've got no concern. But the other question I have, have we ever had a third-party review of our computer network and double-checking the, the work that's done and make sure there's no gaps and things like that?
So I, I can speak for the police department, we are heavily regulated through CGS, so practices that Computer Magic has for the village bleed over into us. And so that's a third-party that does review everything, and Computer Magic actually has to submit things to them directly for us to be, to pass their audits on a regular basis.
Okay.
So I don't know if that helps answer part of that question for you guys?
And we, yeah, we do have to submit stuff to our insurance company as well. But I can look further into it if it's maybe.
Yeah, it's been worth looking into.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Otherwise, we got a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Seven, reports of committees, items offered discussion, possible action. Seven A is the library board minutes for December 14th. Information only was in our packet. Seven B is the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Commission, minutes from January 5th, again, in our packet.
Randy?
Yes, yeah.
Sorry.
You gotta.
Uh, yeah, I had a question on seven A. For the library minutes.
Okay.
For Jennifer. Um, just on there, the construction testing services for authorizing additional testing as needed? What is that?
Yeah, so that's CGC there, um, a testing service, basically, that's done as standard for construction projects, so as they put in the foundation, they're testing to make sure the soil will bear.
So it's just continual test, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a certain number of tasks that is included in that service, and that's just a standard construction thing. Additional testing, if it's deemed necessary, can actually save money, because you want to make sure you don't bring more cover than you need, or bring less cover than you need, so. That's what that's for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, can we go to, let's go to seven, C then, Plan, Plan Commission, which is conditional use permit in agreement with QuickTrip to allow in-vehicle sales and service in the planned business zoning district located at the tax parcel in our agenda. Elise, I, am I correct? I think the gentleman's idea about the, the fence, I think, didn't we address it at the Plan Commission with landscaping?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna just add a little bit to that, so, um, first of all, with the, the site plan, or with the QuickTrip approval, there's a site plan, which just stays at Planning Commission, and that's kind of all the nuts and bolts of the site plan, and lighting, and photometric plans, and landscaping plans, all of that, and then the conditional use permit, which is just focused on, not the actually indoor store use, but the gas pumps themselves. Um, so I think his comments are more of a site plan comment that would have been addressed at the Planning Commission meeting. It was brought up again about the fence, and just a couple of points about fencing in our Planning Commission. So there's a requirement for commercial projects, depending on their abutting properties and their uses, you have to have a certain amount of screening, so that can be made up either with fencing and/or landscaping. So sometimes it's a combination of both, sometimes it's just landscaping, and there's a certain capacity or kind of density of either a fence or landscaping that has to be met. So QuickTrip has met that requirement through landscaping, and the Planning Commission's preference is, has been recently that the screen happen through landscaping, because it looks a lot nicer, it's upkeepped a lot better. Over the years, fences just tend to wear down over time. There's also just kind of the, the visual barrier that's provided. Another point on this site is the QuickTrip is actually quite a bit lower than both the Pine Cove Apartments, which are kind of kitty-corner from the site. I don't even know if they're shown here on the site plan, they're, yeah, right there. And then the Prairie Brook Apartments are actually the closest ones there, that long L-shaped building is the closest apartment building. So we've not heard from Prairie Brook with any concerns. But a fence wouldn't really do much to, I believe, to really impact lines of vision or light or sound, because again, their building is higher than QuickTrip, so regardless of if the fence is six feet high or eight feet high, they're gonna see over it. I think landscaping has more than met the requirement, and there's certainly nothing stopping Pine Cove Apartments from putting up a fence on their property if they're concerned about, you know, foot traffic coming and going, or any of those barriers, so.
Good.
Those are my comments.
All right, do you want, let's get a, can we get a motion, then we can have more discussion? Let's get a motion in a second, Phil and Carlene, second? Okay? All right, and Carlene's comments?
Elise, can you describe the landscaping that was talked about a little bit?
Yeah, there should be a landscape plan, a couple pages, but there'll be, I believe, several trees, and then some, you know, smaller bushes that are kind of along the back there. That was the main side of the site that we were concerned about with landscaping, but there'll be some around the, the building as well. See if I can find what page it's on. Yep, so there's a key there that describes, what page is that?
Uh, 122 of the packet.
Thank you.
So that should have the plant type on there, but again, they've, they've met our requirements, and then there's quite a bit of grade change, I'm not sure, maybe 10 feet?
Eight or 10 feet, yeah. These are evergreens, I believe, right? Yeah, so the majority of the screening here is evergreen.
Are those, may I?
Yeah, of course.
Are those like, tall evergreens that you put in, like, fully formed trees? Or are they little ones that are expected to grow into bigger cover?
Yeah, there's a requirement for a certain diameter of the stem, usually a couple of inches for the trees, I'll, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I'm looking for it.
The caliber?
Black Hills spruce.
Yeah, this, this is some history, too. Pine Cove Apartments, you know, backs up to the new Prairie Brook Apartments, they're actually much closer to the Prairie Brook Apartments than the QuickTrip, and they brought up similar concerns, same request for fencing. Actually went back with the Lake Stone developer guys and kind of walked the sightline, and ultimately, they were fine with the trees, there was no fencing added in that location. So I think there was additional trees that were planted beyond what was required in the landscaping, just because of the Lake Stone guys trying to, trying to be good neighbors, and they're, you know, a lot closer than the QuickTrip.
They're five foot tall, to, initially five foot tall to start, yeah, that's pretty.
That's a good size.
Typical planting, yeah.
Amanda?
Ultimately, those are probably gonna do a lot more to screen than a eight-foot fence that you're gonna just see over anyway.
I'm wondering, you know, is there any concern with people from the apartment buildings, like, walking through the trees to get to the QuickTrip, I mean?
People always take the shortest path, I mean, there's no, you know, shopping that, I'm sure that will happen, but there are, you know, there is a sidewalk that's provided kind of closer to the entrance, towards the, the front building, so that'll be the way to funnel that, and then QuickTrip did add another sidewalk off of Jamesville Street at our request, so that'll be on the eastern entrance. So people coming from, like, the hotel covers in that neighborhood down there, that'll be their quickest way to walk into the site, and not have to cross any lanes of traffic.
Okay, any other discussion? We do have a motion in a second, all right? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And we'll go to C2, and before we go to that, I think Phil wants to read a little statement, he's prepared?
Thank you. I publicly announce that I recuse myself from any discussion and abstain from any vote on agenda items before the village board regarding the consideration of development proposals by Glenn Hofer, including Autumn Ridge Development, Ridgeway Development, and Foxborough Golf Course. I do so as there exists a property line disagreement between Mr. Hofer's Foxborough Golf Course and the County and the condominium community where I reside, Autumn Woods Greens in the Village of Oregon. While I have no personal or pecuniary interest in issues before this body regarding the entities named above, there may be an appearance of conflict in this case, which leads me to recuse myself and abstain from voting. During Village Board discussions, decisions regarding Mr. Hofer's demands before the board, I will step down instead in the audience. I ask that this statement be appended to the meeting minutes, including any future meeting minutes where I opt to recuse due to the above-mentioned concerns. As a matter of clarification, this statement is not to infer that I hold any adverse impressions about Mr. Hofer or any of his pending projects before this body at this reading.
All right, Phil, thank you for that. All right, so we're on to, it's two, we're talking about preliminary plat for second addition to Autumn Ridge subdivision submitted by Hofer Living Trust. And, uh, Elise, I don't know if we need to say anything or?
Uh, my only update since the last time you all have seen this is just that, uh, Mr. Hofer has just decided to move forward with annexation and, and plating approvals for Phase Three only at this time. So there will be some CARPSY, our Capital Area Regional Planning Commission. We will be, um, requesting an urban service area amendment to provide, um, public water and sewer service in the future to Phases Three and Five. Uh, Phase Four is actually already within that boundary. But otherwise, uh, annexation, plating, so this is the preliminary plat, and then you'll see the final plat, um, come shortly behind this. Zoning approvals, that type of thing will just be for Phase Three at this point. So that'll be, um, his hope is to start construction later this summer and then, um, have sort of Phase Three A homes start to be built probably next spring. So that's my only update.
Okay.
This is a, kind of a truncated version of what was shown at a previous meeting.
Okay. All right, uh, can we have a, let's get a motion in a second. We can have more discussion. All right, yeah, Jenna? And in a second, Karleen? Okay, discussion, Karleen?
So this, uh, Phase Three is part of the town currently, right? And so Phase Four, that's, is that part of the golf course, part of the town?
Yes, so, um, I'm.
Here, you want this?
Yeah, so the parcel, um, that's just north of Phase Three is what was shown on, on this map is Phase Four, and then the one to the right is Phase Five. So both Phase Three, Phase Four, and then actually another parcel, that's the golf course above that, is all currently town of Oregon. Phase Five is in the town of Rutland, just to keep things interesting. But yeah, so there's, he has also submitted annexation petition to Candy. And we have, uh, you know, that's on its own timeline. So that's approved through an annexation ordinance, which is a separate process. But no changes to the golf course at this time. I think the, the golf course changes to the twelve-hole course would kind of happen simultaneously with work on Phase Four because that would impact, um, those holes over there.
Okay, Mike?
So are we just voting on the plating tonight or the annexation?
So just the preliminary plat, no annexation. And again, there will be a final plat coming at a later meeting. So this is just saying, we've looked at it, Planning Commission, our engineers have looked at it. You know, they've incorporated some changes and they have some further updates to do in the final plat. So this is just kind of a checkpoint for the plating process.
Does the annexation petition in here have the same flaws with legal specification of the property that the plats do? That were called out by the engineers?
The annexation petition is just a request that this parcel, the whole parcel, not all these individual lots, the whole parcel become part of the village. So we won't actually record this plat until the annexation happens because we can't plat land outside of our boundaries. So they kind of go hand in hand. So depending on where the final plat, when this gets submitted and when the annexation ordinance gets approved, um, if this gets ahead of the annexation, we'll just say the final plat is contingent on recording of the annexation ordinance. And yeah, all of the, any engineering, public works, concerns, comments will be addressed before we're recommending the final plat for approval. So that'll be again at a future meeting. But did I answer your question?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I know you answered some question. I'm just not sure it was mine.
My own question that I made up.
What I was asking at was the legal wording inside the annexation petition, I think is the correct term.
Yep.
The legal description of the site had essentially the same thing, description as the, uh, the description inside the plats for the boundaries. And that was called out and won by Ruker Milke, uh, as being an error on, on a whole number of points, some of which they elucidated and some of which they might not have. And so therefore, I'm assuming the annexation petition would also need to be updated.
Yep. Yeah, we'll make sure those match. Thank you for pointing that out.
Karleen, did you have additional? Okay. Any, anybody else? Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we'll go to three, which is certified, uh, survey map for property located at eight seventy slash eight eighty North Main Street, submitted by Adam Coyle. Apartments, Oregon Apartments Two LLC. We'll get a motion in a second, we'll get it on. Jenna and then Amanda, okay? Any discussion? Or Elise, do you want to say anything? We've seen this several times as well.
Yep, this is the, the last step, um, for Adam before it starts construction. I haven't heard from him in a little while, so I'm gonna be checking up with him, uh, this week, but just on when that site work might start. But there are two parcels out there, um, from the previous development. So this is just combining them into one for his apartment project.
Okay, anybody discussion? Amanda, you look like.
So just to clarify, there's two buildings on here. That's because it's two lots, that's current buildings, but he's going to put a single apartment building on there?
Yep, so that's just showing existing conditions and.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, we can go to nine, which is new business, items offered discussion and possible action. Nine A, presentation from Police Chief Pagankov on department staffing operations in 2023. Chief?
Yes, uh, so I'll be as brief as I can be here. So over the last three years, I've expressed to the Village Board, whether it was an open session, closed session, uh, concerns over employee retention and recruitment. And in January of 2023, I've now received two resignations. Ultimately, that will bring us down five positions, twenty-five percent staffing. We have one vacant patrol officer position, one vacant detective sergeant positions, and two police officers attending the academy, and one officer in field training. I won't go into depth about the academy issues. I tried to highlight it the best I could in the memo. But ultimately, the two biggest challenges with sending, about three biggest challenges with sending people through the academy is number one, we anticipate every hire moving forward will have to go through the academy. Two, the village will have to pay their salary and benefits while they're in the academy. And three, they will technically not count as boots on the road, solo patrol for seven and a half months, if everything goes well. Whatever we did was we tried to, uh, break it down cost-wise. I didn't do the math in my memo for everyone, but it's pretty easy to figure out how much it has cost the village with people coming and leaving. Please note that there will be no cost savings in our budget because the spots, the spots aren't technically open with us paying candidates salary and benefits while they complete the academy and field training. So just to break it down, and I did this in the memo as well, um, staffing resignations over the last three years. In twenty-one, we had two patrol officers resign. Twenty-two, we had swore, four sworn personnel resign, three patrol, one patrol sergeant. And in the first month of 2023, we've had one patrol officer and one detective sergeant resign. Uh, one area of concern that was identified over the last three years is that out of the eight staff members, sworn staff members we've lost in the last three years, half have left the profession entirely. That it, while, um, nationally, we're seeing, uh, retention issues, recruitment issues in law enforcement, I'm not seeing this as much in Dane County as people leaving the profession. It's happening, but not to the level we're seeing it in Oregon. Staff hired over the last three years. In 2021, we hired two patrol officers to backfill spots. Luckily, they were both certified, so they already had the academy, they just had to go through the field training process. And you'll see as this ticks down, in 2022, we had to hire three patrol officers to backfill. Uh, two of the three were not certified. So now we went from, we got all certified to now two of the three were not certified, so we had to send them through the academy. In 2023, uh, we're already hiring two and they will have to go through the academy, which they've now started as of January. I don't believe they complete their academy till roughly August, well, and with the field training. Uh, I just tried to highlight too, the budget concerns here. So in twenty-one, we were allocated thirty thousand, uh, as the budget for overtime. Uh, we went over that total budget amount by fifty-eight thousand four hundred and sixteen. We were able to save money because of those vacant positions. In 2022, we were allocated again thirty thousand for overtime, similar to twenty-one. Uh, we went over budget that year in twenty-two, uh, a total of eighty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. We were able to recoup some of the costs through grants and vacant positions. In 2023, uh, we did, we were able to bump it up ten thousand, so we got forty thousand for a budget for overtime. Even with the vacant positions, we will undoubtedly go over our overtime budget with just, uh, the loss of two employees. And we're only in January at this point. Overall concerns, law enforcement, obviously law enforcement agencies across the nation are facing the same retention challenges. What's unique to Oregon, what I'm most worried about is burnout. It's a significant concern and we are constantly monitoring it. We have also lost a significant amount of experience over that last three years. We're not just talking patrol officers, which many of them were experienced, but also are sergeants. Uh, we are seeing more two-officer violent calls. These calls can take up more time and require more officers to respond. When this occurs, it prevents us from responding to other calls. Uh, as we sat through our meeting, I was watching the queue and we had two calls waiting about a half an hour each while we're dealing right now with the disturbance. Our investigative unit is increasingly busy and going down to one detective, because we've lost, we've lost that detective sergeant, we won't be able to backfill that for probably the remainder of the year, is a concern as well. Our investigative unit is responsible for handling cases such as child abuse, sexual assault, child pornography, suspicious deaths, and armed robberies, just to name a few. For the remainder of the year, Lieutenant and I will try to backfill some of those roles and help out where we can. I also highlighted, one of the most common complaints we are receiving is our traffic violations. I detail in here how I, I commonly review our calls for service data. Due to the, um, staffing shortages, the increase in calls for service, and then also more of our resources being put on certain calls, we've watched as the traffic numbers have decreased pretty, pretty much, quite a bit. So in order to continue to address the traffic concerns, uh, in our community, um, I'm suspending some nonessential police services. If we continue to lose staff, um, I'm always trying to plan for that. Right now, I'm planning to lose probably two more by the end of the year, just so we have planning in place. We'll have to cut more services. Retainment, so I, I'm not gonna come to you with just problems I, I didn't before and I won't again. Um, I'm gonna try to come with some solutions. You know, other agencies are struggling with this as well, but I am really concerned about the Village of Oregon's public safety. I'm trying to come with some solutions and I've highlighted them. I mean, to try, I tried to identify just three major categories. Pay benefits, you know, we've taken this really big, strong step with the salary study. I am talking to my counterparts, they're doing the exact same thing, whether they're a step up in front of us or a step behind us. And I know Carlson and Detman stressed that we just need to pay close attention to as other, these other communities try to fluctuate. But this isn't a problem you can just throw money at. You know, another area is the work environment. These officers, including myself, are just like you guys. We, we want career advancement, we want training to be better in our field, um, and we want to find unique ways to contribute to this community. So already internally, we are working hard to find those. But we're gonna, uh, stress even harder with our sergeants, lieutenant, and myself just trying to find different ways, unique ways. But, um, I can't stress enough the importance of getting to that two-officer minimum, that's huge. Officers do not want to work by themselves, and especially now with the, the call volume we have and the types of calls we're seeing, it's incredibly unsafe for one officer to be on duty in the village at one time. I know that, that scares people hearing that, that there may only be one officer working here. Fortunate for us, we have a very dedicated, dedicated staff that doesn't like their fellow partners working alone, so they're picking up the overtime so that the one officer isn't working alone. Well, that is where the burnout's gonna start, is because you have these officers constantly picking up this overtime and people need to be able to shut it off after a while. So we're, we're closely monitoring the burnout. With the Village leadership, uh, Village Board and leadership support, um, I, I can't tell you how important that is in talking not only with members of our department, but in, in the difference in some of these other communities where they've figured this out and they're pushing harder in this area. Uh, any employee, regardless of profession, wants to feel like their, that work is valued. We, we understand policing needs to be better and that's why we're at the roof getting this work done. And good officers have, have the pick of whatever agency they want to go to. They pay close attention to what other communities are doing. And in fact, I have a LinkedIn account, I was just watching, uh, a recruiter that's out there, it's a, it's a company that is giving advice to people that want to get into this profession of, you know, before you even start applying, start watching these government meetings and seeing how, how are they, uh, interacting with all of their departments, including the Police Department? And see if that's how you, you know, this, if that's the right fit for you. I think what will, will set us apart from other departments is when those of us in these positions of authority and leadership demonstrate support for officers and the good work they're doing, not only in words, but in their actions. And, and my final comments in this memo, and I, I'm gonna read them because I think this is incredibly important. I do have serious concerns about suspending police services in our community, regardless if they are essential or nonessential. Suspending services can impact community police relations and our ability to establish strong and trusting relationships. Longer wait times for calls for service, fewer crimes solved and cleared, less proactive activities such as traffic enforcement and on-duty officers who are burned out and overworked, all are factors that threaten the quality of life in our community. So, you know, I, I wanna just be very, I mean, I know this board wants transparency, so it's right in front of you in black and white. I'm coming to you with some problems, I can't solve them by myself. Put some solutions in here and I, I would really like some comments, feedback, thoughts from this Village Board, please.
Okay. All right, Karleen, start.
I'd just like to start by saying, this is clearly a thoughtful report and something that you've spent a lot of time on. And it's also very clear how much this weighs on you. And I just want to express the appreciation for the time and thought and, and how much the public safety weighs on you. And I, I appreciate that and, and the officers on the OPD.
Okay. Anybody else? Yep, Amanda and then Mike?
Yeah, um, can I just ask, because you, you mentioned, um, suspending police services, nonessential ones or whatever? What do you mean, like, can you give me some examples? Because I'm, I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around what that is.
And I apologize, I should have ended with that.
It's okay.
So I can't specifically say what, because then that shows the vulnerabilities in our community. Uh, what I will say is, I'm looking right now at services, I would hope the community never knows or just taken away and suspended for a while. As far as going out to calls for service and coming when our community needs us, that's still gonna happen. That's the best way I can answer your question without exposing our vulnerabilities.
Sure. And if, if you guys, if, if you have two officers on duty and they're at a, a call where you have to have, you know, two officers and there are other calls waiting, is there any backup? Like, does the Dane, Dane County Sheriff's Department step in? How does that work?
So if it's something, um, that's an emergency, they may if they're available. But I'll tell you, they're, they're hopping too right now and they're short-staffed too. You know, I, we have a very good partnership with Stoughton Police Department, Fitchburg Police Department, and some of these outliers. But everybody's seeing the same problems right now. So it's, and that's why I just can't stress enough, we really need to be very, much more careful right now about retaining the good people we have. Because the pool that's out there. Because the pool that's out there, you know, there are still some very good people out there, but getting them to apply here over other agencies that may have better pay, more opportunity, if we can build stronger on each of those three, maybe not one only, you know, not only throwing money at it, or not only, you know, support, just giving a well-rounded environment for these employees, I think will help us retain.
All right. Mike, you were up.
So I presume you, you prefer hiring experienced people over training them up?
No, I prefer to find the right person for this community.
So do you have difficulty finding that person, even with dangling training and everything else? I mean, is this a problem that we can't find people? Or is it a problem that, I mean, there's a systemic delay built into this process that looks like it's ten or eleven months from when you decide to hire, to go through the recruitment process, to get them trained, to put them in in-service training, and finally come out with someone who is, can be put on the street eleven months later?
Yeah, and we've streamlined it since then. So we've actually shortened ours significantly compared to some other communities and actually beat them, and to beat them before they hired the person. But in reality, it comes down to, how do they enter, first of all, what's their application look like? Are they even qualified to meet the minimum standards to be a cop? Two, how did they rate with an interview? Three, did they pass a background investigation? In all of those phases, we start filtering. And there's been times where we just don't find the right person. And we will set the whole list to the side and we'll start over again. Then we do a medical, a psych, a drug test, psychological exam. And again, those are all phases where things can go awry. We've had scenarios where another agency hires them before we can finalize everything too. Or there's been other scenarios where we're neck-to-neck with an agency, but they simply beat us in pay or opportunity, or their family lives in that area, there's just a variety of things. I will say, we do get good applicants. But just because the person's already a police officer somewhere does not make, mean they make the top of the list either. We're gonna find the right person, and if we have to invest in them and train them, it's worth it in the long run. We'd rather grow somebody who's right for this community than settle for someone that's maybe qualified from the get-go, but we know is not the right fit for our department or community.
So we're, we're down on staff, you've identified, we will be further down on staff likely by the end of the year.
Could be.
Can you start hiring for positions before they're kind of a predictive hiring on the basis that these are probably gonna be gone and we should start getting new people in the pipeline? Because it seems like you're, with this systemic delay built in, it seems like you're forever gonna be chasing your tail and short-staffed, and people are going to be burning out because they're working too many hours and your budget's gonna be blown because you're paying time and a half. And it seems that unless you can find a way to start getting ahead in the hiring cycle and starting to put people into the pipeline, I think we're forever gonna be chasing our tails.
So, and I should clarify that, so with us, here's the challenge. If we, if we don't have a good applicant that applies, that is not certified, we have to wait till that academy starts. So the academy, that's first academy, there's two each year, and the first academy's already started, we got two in there. That's the most we've ever sent through the academy one time, just because it fills up, you only have so many spots. The next one doesn't start till August. So right now, we are doing exactly how you described, we're stacking, we're waiting. So we have an ongoing hiring process right now and we're taking in applications. We won't look at those applications until probably end of April, May-ish, because there's no point in starting the process with them until then, because we can't get them into the academy till August anyway. So what we're gonna find is if we spend all of this money to put them through that hiring process on the medical, the psych, we're gonna spend all that money and another agency may come and pick them up while we're waiting to get them into the academy. And it could be, let's say Middleton, and they say, you know what, I told Oregon I'd work for them, but never mind, I can go make so much more at Middleton and they'll still send me to that same academy. So it's all about timing it just right. So our goal is hopefully, we can get two stacked up in April, May, to then start the academy in August. But for now, we're just gonna collect as many applications as we can. We keep doing these blasts on job fairs, universities, tech schools, trying to get as many apps in right now. And then we're gonna pile them up, and they know we're waiting and they, they respect that, but then, then it'll be go time. Does that make sense? Because there's so many steps to this, okay.
And can I just clarify that if in those applications you get someone who's already been through the academy, you can bump them ahead?
Yes, yep, yep, because they would have more qualifications than the current list of applications. But that's one where we would still be very careful as to why. Why are you applying here? Why are you leaving the agency that you're leaving?
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, Derek?
I'd just like to say that I appreciate the time you're taking to kind of look through the applicants to make sure that they are the correct fit for the community, because as nice as it is to have people on staff, it would be not in the best interest of the department to have the wrong fit for the community. And I think you're going about this the right way with the timing of processing the applications, and not putting, like you say, all the time and expense into trying to screen just for another agency to snap it up. So I appreciate the report for what it is as well.
Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, as far as work environment and stuff, you know, from a village board perspective, are there specific actions that you would like to see board members take to demonstrate support for your officers? Like showing up to events or like, you know, are, like, are there specific things you would like to see from the board that would help the work environment?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think some, while I think it's always well-intended, sometimes comments, random comments can come across anti-police, I guess is the best way to put it. You know, that's one particular, you know, getting to know what they do, sometimes they appreciate that, sometimes, you know, just talking with them, and I know Amanda, you've actually talked with a few of our officers, and they really appreciate that. But, you know, I will soon be coming to you with more ideas. And I think, you know, actions are, or words are one thing, actions are another. And when I bring these things to you, I'm gonna say, this is, I think, another opportunity we can provide to our officers. I will tell you, the drone program is huge, that is huge. Our biggest competitor, because they're accredited and we are, but they pay better and they're, you know, they have a higher population, larger department, is Middleton. I've been looking at them thinking, what do they have, what could we get that they don't have? Drone programs, well, they don't have one. And as soon as I came back and said, hey, the village board is very supportive of the drone program, it went over really well, and a lot of people are very interested in it. I think I got half the department that emailed me back and said, please let me know, I'd like to get involved. So, and I think it'll be those opportunities, and honestly, I mean, it's a win anyway. I can't tell you how beneficial it's gonna be to have a drone program, just with some of the calls we've had in the last two weeks.
Okay.
I think, and the last thing is really working hard towards that two-officer minimum, but to get there, we're gonna have to add positions. And that's hard, I know it's difficult, but we have to get there.
Okay. All right, yeah, Jenna?
Um, how many positions do you foresee us needing to add before we can get that two-officer minimum?
Yep, I would say two.
And then I know this fall, we just did contract negotiations, and then of course we did the compensation study, but also I'm hearing a lot about pay. So with those, like, how far behind are we, or how much more ground do we need to gain in that area?
So in the meeting that I had, Rudy and I had with Lisa and Martin, we actually discussed that. And Rudy's gonna start collecting some more information from those departments, more updated, because there's already quite a bit of movement, to see how much things have changed. But I know the sergeant rank is still a little off. I am glad we settled on a four-year with the union, though. Just one last piece right now to work with, yeah.
Thank you, and thank you then for the report.
Derek, one last thing?
Yeah, just a question, as far as recruitment, just the local level of people who live within the village, what kind of efforts are we making there?
So, a lot. So internships is one, but when you're short-staffed, it's impossible. It's like you're chasing your own tail. You have to have somebody that can give that intern projects to work on, supervise and things like that. So that was one area where we were doing good at, and we've had to take a step back from. Greg, I'm gonna say his last name wrong, Grensberg, with the high school, hooks us up all the time with the career fairs and things like that. And then I know our school resource officer talks with students often about what it's like to be an SRO, a police officer. We also are involved in some of the Eagle Scout ceremonies, and try to promote our work that way. And then also, you know, there's, when we do, when we are hiring, it's on our Facebook, it's on our website. I know Candy does a great job of helping us with, I think it's Ennotify that you use, don't you, with announcements like that? But we're, you know, even at the local level, we're also approaching people that we think, you know, could be, or might be interested in trying to encourage them to apply. So, you know, I think one of our local successes there was Landon Thies, and he's been doing a phenomenal job in field training, and he is local, so. Has been going well, and obviously Cal Shuey, okay, yes, Cal Shuey. So our local efforts do work pretty well.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, thanks for the very thoughtful presentation. All right, let's get to nine B, which is future agenda items. This item gives the board members the opportunity to place items and new business on our future agenda for discussion. Anybody have anything?
I wonder if I could just make, just say something about the DEI training? Just to remind folks on the board and staff and committees and boards that we, if you're interested in being part of the Black History for a New Day class, need to make sure that Martin knows that and so that we can get those names in. We do have fifty slots as part of the DEI training, and we do have facilitators from within our community who are being trained in the next week or two. The classes will be asynchronous, so you don't have to be part of the Monday night. Clearly, we wouldn't be able to be part of the Monday night, so hopefully that will happen. How, how long before you're gonna send those names in, Martin?
Probably sometime later this week, actually.
Yeah, because the, the public, the public deadline for the class was the fifteenth of January, and so they've extended it for groups. So as soon as you can get that information to Martin, it's, please do.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's go to ten, reports of village officers. Ten A was a village administrative report that was in our packet from Martin. Also, ten, ten B, director of finance report on billing permits, impact fees, connection fees. Anybody have any questions on either of those two items? Seen none, all right. Village department head staff, consultant, I know Rachel's got an announcement to make. Two of them, all right.
Two announcements both food-related? The first one is short and sweet, the second, not so much. So the first one is Remember the Pancake Breakfast and Bake Sale is this Sunday between seven and twelve at the Senior Center. The second one is a rather longer story. As you guys are probably aware, when the village signs the contract with Dane County every year to provide services to older adults in the area, we agree to provide meals to people who qualify for them. Those meals go out to people who live in their homes, who are considered homebound, as well as to people who come to the center to eat. I think last year, we provided just under twelve thousand meals. That includes the meals that were served at Ziggy's as part of their Thursday program. In all the years that I've worked at the Senior Center, which is coming up on thirteen, we had had our meals provided to us by the county. They, they contract with a caterer by Consolidated Food Service, CFS. CFS at late in 2022 notified the county that they no longer were going to be able to provide the meals because of capacity issues that they were facing. The county put out an RFP requesting a caterer for the fourteen meal sites that CFS had previously supplied with food. The new caterer that was awarded the contract was Little John's. They started in January. It was not a smooth transition to the new caterer. This afternoon at three forty-five, I learned that Little John's has chosen to discontinue the contract. They, without any warning, posted something on Facebook, basically, is how the county found out. So the program is in disarray at the moment, and the county, because it is their obligation to provide the food, is struggling right now to figure out just what's going to happen, because of course they haven't had much time to think about this yet. But for at least the next three weeks, things will be much less typical than we would expect. And because we don't really know yet what the county's going to do, we don't know what we might need from the community. But I will say that if there are people amongst this group who are aware of commercial kitchens that are not in use, especially in the mornings, there may be a need for us to be able to have access to commercial kitchens to at least put together meals. We're not able to serve food to people that isn't prepared in commercial kitchens. So we will be looking perhaps at locally-produced food temporarily, as well as shelf-stable foods that can be purchased in grocery stores. But I wanted to make you aware of that very dramatic change. I'm, I'm proud to say that when COVID hit and everything shut down, we did not miss a day of serving meals to our older adults. And unfortunately, because of this situation, we will be missing at least a day, if not more. Yes, Mike?
So this was effective immediately from Little John's?
Yes.
Is there any potential to have CFS pick up and cover while the county scrambles?
The county's initial reaction was that CFS can probably step in as of February thirteenth. But that leaves three weeks or so without anything to fill that gap. So I'm sure the county is scrambling to, you know, like I said, we all found this out a couple of hours ago.
Would the county provide money to get from a local restaurant, perhaps?
And that's another thing they were going to be exploring. So we may be able to, for example, look at our restaurant program through Ziggy's and see if there's some ability to expand that to two days a week from its one day a week. But that is unfortunately not really within my hands. So we'll see what the county, what the county does.
Boy, this has just gone from bad to worse with Little John's.
It has not been a smooth ride.
Carleen's got a question.
How many meals on average per day are you talking about at this point?
I would say it tends to range from thirty to fifty.
And follow-up to that, if there's a commercial kitchen available, you have staff who could prepare?
We have four, on staff, four certified restaurant managers.
Okay.
Was that another question?
You need a commercial kitchen, right?
This is why we need a commercial kitchen. You know, for example, Stoughton Senior Center has a commercial kitchen. They're having rather different conversations than we are right now.
Yeah, Derek?
Yeah, can we put some? Yeah, can we put something out on the village notification system that we're looking for use of a commercial kitchen from some well-meaning individual? Just to get it out there to the broader public?
That's a great idea, I think.
Just to spread the word, really.
I would encourage you to check in, I think Peoples' Methodist Church has a commercial kitchen, so check with them, I think.
Yeah, we can find that out, I'll text Dan. Is there a possibility of perhaps collaborating with Stoughton because they have a commercial kitchen?
They're somewhat limited by the space, by the, they put out a lot more meals than we do, but yeah, there's nothing that's, you know, cast in stone at this point, we'll, we'll be doing a lot of asking each other, what can we do? How can we make this work? How do we get food into the hands of people who need the food?
Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, I was wondering, too, like some business, I'm thinking of maybe like Maria's, I know they we have a, you know, they're not open every single day and, you know, maybe some of the time, they would let you use, but worth maybe checking?
Yep, that's, you know, that's exactly the kind of question we're asking, like, who's not open early in the day who may have the kitchen? So, thank you for those ideas.
Alright, not good news, I did see the Facebook page, it's all over Facebook. Little John's, so. Alright, any, yeah, Chief?
Maybe some better news. So, I'm sure many of you remember Officer Carraco, he was our last school resource officer, now our new K-nine officer. I just wanted to share a success story. Another community had requested him and his partner for a child with disabilities last seen walking towards two main highways. As many of you know, K-nine Archie is a tracking dog as well. And it was described after the child was found safe as spot-on. Archie helped find the dog, or find the child, excuse me, the dog helped find the child. So, this ended really well and that's all due to that, that hard work that Officer Carraco was done with training the dog and getting himself ready, so. Just a good success story there.
Alright, Elise has got something too.
An update, your next meeting, we'll have a short joint meeting at the beginning of the village board meeting with the planning commission. That'll be two comp plan related items, we'll have a comp plan amendment, actually for Autumn Ridge that needs to move a little bit ahead of our overall comp plan schedule, so we'll start the process for that as well as kind of a kickoff for the comp plan and the park plan updates. We are starting to put together lists of names for a focus group, that'll happen later in February, so I might reach out to a couple of you just for some ideas on people in the community to get on those focus groups as well as a public open house kickoff event. So we'll have those specific dates and more of a detailed timeline to share at the next board meeting.
Okay, alright, anybody else?
Randy, I got two quick things.
Yeah, Martin, go ahead.
So, the Oregon PD put out a press release over the weekend, so it was a chance to execute our new policy. So Candy slipped that into the packet today, so it didn't go out originally when it was published last Wednesday, but it is in the packet now and online, and then she also put it out through Enotify. And then the second one, I just wanted to highlight for the February village boards. So, the second village board meeting is the day before the primary election, so we won't have that meeting and we'll have it a week prior to that on the thirteenth. So village board meetings will be February sixth and February thirteenth.
And can I add one more thing to the schedule? The DEI committee meets on the first Thursday, the second, February second at six-thirty at Peoples' United Methodist Church. And Dan just texted me back, it's not a commercial kitchen at Peoples'.
Okay.
I did ask him though if he knows. It's close, but not, not quite.
Alright, let's go, next, let's go to ten D, which is village board comments, anybody have anything? You need to comment on tonight? Seen any? Okay, eleven, announcements miscellaneous. Eleven A, upcoming meetings and events, that was in our packet as well, to put on our calendars. So, let's go to adjournment, I'll take a motion. Mike, Amanda, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're adjourned, thank you.